I call this Public Caucus to Order. We're here today with our city solicitor, Mr. Beck, from our Treasury Department and representatives from Northeast Revenue Service to talk about the collection process for the garbage fee. So we'll have about 40 minutes to discuss this. What we'll do is we'll let you guys go in some detail on the process of that and where we are. Council members will have time at the end to ask questions or during it if they have something that pops up that's relevant to the topic that we're talking about. So at this time, I'll give the floor over to you guys, and away we go.
Well, thank you for the invitation to come this evening for the caucus. You've already made the introductions. Since the purpose of this caucus is, according to the letter, was to discuss the status of delinquent refuse bills, collection procedures for delinquencies, and the municipal lien process. It appears possible logical that maybe the place to start would be an explanation from Northeast Revenue Service as to what their function is and how it pertains to the collection of the delinquent waste.
Yeah, I agree. That's a good point. You know, you guys are under contract with us, and, you know, we would like to know what we're getting for that contract. You know, we see the news, we see what's reported. So what's your ability and what's your capability on your end of the process to deliver to us some of these fees?
Sure. Good evening, and again, thank you for allowing us to come here and explain ourselves. My name is Sean Shimani. I'm a Director of Operations and a Partner with Northeast Revenue, and with me tonight is Keesha Johns, who is our manager, day-to-day manager of the Scranton office. And we've been contracted with the City of Scranton going back to 2011. We started collection of the refuse fees in the end of 2012. So we've been playing a little bit of catch-up with getting those properties leamed. What we typically do is we receive a file from the Treasurer's Office usually every January with the most recent year of delinquencies. As of the last couple of years, the amount that has been coming through is approximately about $2.5 million in delinquencies, which equates to about 6,300 to 6,600 parcels that remain delinquent and turned over to us in the beginning of January every year. During the course of the year, we typically mail out approximately five to six letters, both of them being either a reminder letter to try and spur collections, and then towards the end of the year, we do what is a lien letter or a notice of attorney's fees to assess a lien. And with that, that goes out certified. That goes out for a period of 30 days, and after those 30 days, we also go above and beyond, and we send a regular first-class letter. Because as we know, in our business, a lot of people don't respond to, unfortunately, certified letters. If they find out who it's from, they say, "Who's it from?", and they reject it at the post office and don't pick it up. So under state law, you need to send a regular first-class letter, which details the same information that's in the certified letter, and we give them another 30 days before we actually file the liens with the Clerk of Judicial Records. And I passed out to you tonight a little breakdown, which I can go through as far as our collection effort so far for the years 2011 through 2018. As you'll see on the first page, I detailed by year the amount that was turned over to us from the Treasurer. And keep in mind that, in the collection business, we are, in order to get a clear picture of your collection rates, we only look at face and penalty, because interest and cost would differ from individual to individual based on when you paid and how long down the road you went with your fee being outstanding. So all of this information that's included in this handout is face and penalty, okay? So you'll see, just I'll go through the first year, 2011. You'll see that there was $1.4 million in face and penalty that was turned over to Northeast Revenue from the Treasurer's Office, and that would have been returned in 2012. But again, we were just picking up the contract at that time, so we didn't get to start collecting on that until probably about August, because there was a lot of information that had to be uploaded systematically in order to get the collection efforts underway. But then you will see, and what I did was I took this breakdown through the end of last month. So all of this data is effective as of March 31st, and we usually try and cut off on a month's basis. So I didn't want to cut off in the middle of a month, because we tend to see some more collections as the month progresses, and a lot of people do wait till the end of the month to make payments, we have noticed in our business. So this is all as of 3/31/19. You'll see that, just for instance, in the year 2011, there was $741,000 that was collected of face and penalty and an additional $385,000 that was exonerated as of 3/31, which means that it was wiped off the books with the approval of the Treasurer back at that time. So the actual remaining balance, for instance, on the 2011 year, would be $327,797.90, which is just again face and penalty, which equates to approximately 22.5% outstanding or remaining. Now, it should be noted that the liens have been filed on the 11s, 12s, 13s, 14s, and 15s, so the city's interest is protected. And as I stated earlier, we played a lot of catch-up on that because of the fact that we had to get a lot of information corrected in the system prior to making sure that that information was viable and able to be leaned.
Sean, if you don't mind, can you touch on the exonerations for a second? How does that happen? How does that play out? Why are they exonerated?
Sure. I will actually turn that over to Keesha, because she sees that more on a day-to-day basis.
Reasons that they would be exonerated would be if a customer would come in and they have a vacant property, and they would file the vacancy paperwork and an electric bill or a water bill stating showing minimal use, that no one lived there. If a property was condemned, they would get a condemned letter for that same reason. And also, if there was an error where they had made a payment, but it was not credited to their account, we would then take it off their account and reissue that to the account that it was.
Are they going into your office, or are they going into the Treasurer's Office? Because I know that they do that in the Treasurer's Office as well.
The vacancies for the current year are done to the Treasurer.
Okay.
But once it gets turned over to up to Northeast Revenue, then we would do the exonerations in the computer.
All right. And can you just, what is your role in Northeast Revenue Services? Are you the Vice President, did you say, or?
I'm a Director of Operations and one of the Partners in Northeast Revenue.
Okay. And where is the principal place of business for Northeast Revenue?
For the City of Scranton, we collect downstairs in the Treasurer's Office.
Okay.
We have two desks in the Treasurer's Office that we have two employees.
And how about your headquarters?
Our headquarters are in Plains Township.
Plains Township?
Yes.
And how many NRS employees are actually located in the Treasury Department?
Two, two full-time employees.
Okay. And how many employees are in the Treasury Department? Two, I believe?
There's myself, a clerk, and a bookkeeper.
Okay. Thank you.
Wayne, in addition to your question, I'd like to also point out that exonerations would include condemned properties that maybe no one brought to our attention or something of that nature, land bank properties. But exonerations, at least as far as we have been involved, are only granted if they can be proven and acceptable.
Okay. And all of you, you're starting from 2011, because that's when the lien process started in 2014, but you were allowed to go back a few years, so that's why we're starting in 2011?
Correct, yes. Prior to 2011, there were no liens filed.
Okay.
And, you know, I won't bore the group here by going through year by year unless you want me to do that. I believe, once you understand 2011, it's pretty self-explanatory following the years after that. However, on page two, there is a summary that breaks it down here, and again, talking about face and penalty. So you'll see, 2010 and prior, there was $1.9 million, and then it goes on from 2011 through '18.
Just excuse me one second. The paper landed on the microphone there. It's probably going to be difficult to hear at home, that's all.
So for instance, with the 2011, this is just reiterating some of the stuff that's on page one. You'll see 2011, that $327,797.90 is your remaining balance, which is about 22%, and that equates to approximately exactly 1,272 parcels as of March 31st, 2019. And you'll see it goes further down. And obviously, it makes sense that the most recent year, 2018, you would have the most amount of parcels, because the information just came over to Northeast Revenue in January of this year. And so we've already sent out one letter to that year delinquency, but that's why there's still 5,000 still outstanding, and that will decrease as the year progresses.
Okay. What is your, what's your collection rate since 2012 with the delinquent refuse bills?
With the refuse? It would, if you average it out, it averages about 75 to 80%.
So that's the percentage that you collected?
That we collected.
If somebody wants to call NRS, who do they call? Do they call down to the Treasury Department, or you have your own?
No, we have a separate phone number, and we have an 800 number, a toll-free number that comes right into the Treasurer's Office. We have our own phone lines, our own computer system down there, and they could call right directly to us.
While you're on that collection rate, excuse me, do you have any idea, or can you estimate possibly, what percentage of that 70, or 25% that's not paying would be considered rental properties or investment properties where we would have an investor involved or an absentee landlord involved?
We're actually in the process of trying to break that down between the properties that were sold in repository, the condemned properties, and, what was the one I was missing? The vacancies. Vacancies.
Can I ask you a question on that, too? So you've had this contract since 2012, correct?
Yes.
So why is it just now that, all of a sudden, we're trying to figure out what properties are condemned, and, like, why hasn't that happened over the course of time?
Well, I think it's a lot of information, and as I stated earlier, we were playing catch-up to try and get these properties leaned, so that your interest was protected from the City of Scranton's standpoint, and that's what we focused on, making sure that the liens were filed properly in the Clerk of Judicial Records. That was first and foremost.
Okay.
Sorry. Anecdotally, though, since you don't have the numbers, do you feel that a large percentage of that 25% could be tracked to investment properties or income properties?
I can't make that determination without actually delving into the, and having a clear picture, the full picture of repository sales and condemned.
Do you have any idea when you might have that information available?
We are working on it.
I can't say, Wayne, as far as the Tax Claim Bureau repository properties, that's still, well, maybe that requires an explanation, too. When a property goes through a judicial sale, if it's not sold at the judicial sale, it goes into the county's repository.
Correct.
It stays in the entity's name that owned it when it went through the sale. It doesn't change title to the county. So that name and all of the delinquency items, including penalty and interest associated with that property, are going to stay out there, and it's going to look like it's an individual delinquency, but it's in the repository, again, with all the baggage that goes along with it. I have started to go, maybe I should further say that it doesn't change title until someone either buys it from the repository, or if they buy it right at the sale itself. I have gone through about 60% of the listings in the county tax claim repository, and as we speak, there's about $385,000 at that 60% level that are included in these delinquency figures. I hope to be able to finish that within the next couple of days. I did most of it over a fairly short period of time, and I'm expecting that it's probably going to come out somewhere between at least $800,000 and $1 million that are in that figure.
Well, that's helpful. But what I'm trying to get at, personally, I believe that a large portion of the delinquencies that are outstanding are in the hands of absentee landlords that aren't paying their fair share, and that's what I'm trying to get at. So hopefully, we can get some more data on that, and we can come to a conclusion if that's actually the case.
Just as another point, some of the things that have been done recently between the city, the county, and the county's land bank, we all have a vetting process now, where if you want to bid on a property, you've got to fill out an application, you've got to provide photo ID, you've got to provide an affidavit stating that you are not delinquent on any taxes or other items due to, in our case, the city, in the county's case, they want the whole county.
Right.
And we're given the chance to vet those applicants, so that if they are delinquent, we can say, "We don't want this person accepted as a qualified bidder or as a purchaser from the repository."
Yeah, that grew out of the blight task force that I serve now, and you're actually, we work with the Task Claim Office to give you that information to disqualify the bidders when they're in that situation, which is certainly appropriate, because they're not paying their taxes, they're not paying their garbage fees, and they're still out there bidding on properties, which is absolutely ridiculous that that was allowed to happen even up until recently. So that's a great thing that's taking place right now.
And that was a great thing to put in place.
Yep, absolutely. All right. Thanks, Wayne.
I have a question, just a general question about, like, what the end game is in this whole situation, because it seems to me that this whole system is just broken. Besides leaning properties, like, the way I look at it, if, you know, if I owed $50,000 in garbage fees and you lien my property, you know, big whoop. I mean, I'm probably not going to sell my house anyways. So what other things can you do besides lien a property? Because if we, you know, continue to use the services of NRS, to me, it seems like this is just going to, we're going to keep having this problem on and on and on and on. So you can either, NRS can answer it, or even more so, the administration, what's the plan moving forward? Because obviously, this doesn't, this isn't working. Like, what are the other avenues besides leaning a property? It's been brought up here before, "Don't pick up their trash." Is that a viable option that you're looking at? Sending them to the magistrate? You know, putting them in jail? I don't know. I mean, these are all the things that people have brought up, and I think we should look at other avenues. So my question to you guys is, what is the alternatives and what is the plan here?
Yes, that will pick you up, right? That will pick you up.
That'll pick me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So as far as, you know, I like taking a solutions-based approach. I think the Scranton Times did a wonderful job in their reporting, and I think we've certainly taken proactive measures over time. Unfortunately, progress is rarely linear, but I think we're building on what came before to try to improve things. So in addition to the measures that they take for collections, we have implemented the liens, and I think there's further options that we can begin to explore, because I think there's absolutely room for improvement here. And so I don't want to get too in detail, given that there is a pending lawsuit about what some of those options are. But I think absolutely, some of the things we can evaluate and work together on to find solutions is perhaps modification in our billing mechanisms. I think that might be a viable option to try and drive up the collection rate. I think additionally, we can look at as an option filing magistrate's actions. I do want to acknowledge that that can be costly and time-consuming, so it's something I would definitely want to study a lot more closely before pulling the trigger on something like that, but definitely an option that we can explore, and I think it's worth doing so. I also think, I know advertising has come up as an option. I do recognize, in working with folks on a daily basis, that I don't necessarily know that, you know, shame is a good approach, to put it pretty bluntly. I think there are some folks who are experiencing hardship, but perhaps that's something we may want to contemplate. At the end of the day, the mayor and you all, as our legislative body, are those policy decision-makers. But those are just some ideas, I think, off the top of my head, that we might want to explore further, and we're definitely open to going down that road and seeing what we think would be most beneficial.
On the real estate side of it, one example that the newspaper pointed out was PSN Realty of Bronxville, New York owes a total of $125,376 on 19 properties. They have a total of 128 separate bills incurred over many years. Do we know, and I'm just assuming, that that company would have to pull permits to do work or improve their properties? Have we allowed them to do that? Or do we say, "Wait a minute, you owe all this money, you can do no more work"? Or, you know, I mean, it seems like they're getting away kind of scot-free here and thumbing their nose at the city.
And that's something we can absolutely look at as well. As far as the inner workings, the day-to-days of the Licensing, Inspections, and Permits Department, I can't really speak to that off of the cuff, but I would absolutely be willing to follow up with them and see if there's any checks and balances on that end. I think that's a fair idea.
All right. To that end, since we're talking about PSN, I contacted License and Inspections and asked them if they had paid their rental registration, so we knew where they stood, and the answer I got back was, "They haven't paid anything." I'm not sure exactly what that meant, but it was a sort of a cryptic answer, because there are tools in that tool belt as well, through the rental registration ordinance, that we could actually set up an escrow account for existing tenants, take their rent until they paid their fees, either taxes and/or garbage fees, so, but I don't want to get too far off the top.
And I think just to that point on rental registration, we're very pleased to have settled that class action. We're in the process of issuing payments, so the enforcements available to us are now no longer under that cloud, and so that's something that we're able to utilize now as well to get this addressed, which I think is wonderful.
A quick follow-up to Bill's question. From NRS, from your perspective, is there anything that we can do legislatively that could increase your collection rate?
Well, let me just touch on one of the items you talked about with an out-of-state company who has multiple properties. If you're well aware that about a year or two ago, the state changed its laws as far as by us putting these liens in place, protecting your interest, if you have multiple properties and you have liens on those properties, if you go to refinance or sell one of your multiple properties, those liens have to be picked up by the title companies, and they must be satisfied. So that is a benefit that I think you're going to see more and more as we move down the road, because it's only about two years that it's in place with the State of Pennsylvania. But it was meant to protect the municipalities and taxing bodies, because you have these out-of-state landlords that are buying up properties left and right and mortgaging them to the hills, and then they're just turning around and doing the same thing with a new property, while they're not getting caught up on all the old debt that they have. So that, I think you're going to see some direct benefit as time progresses. But just to touch on what Jessica said, I think they're all viable options that we can do, you know, and one of them is the executing on the liens by, you know, going through the magistrate or eventually to a sheriff's sale, if that's a possibility. That would be one of the ways that would definitely, if you set a threshold, to attack some of those larger outstanding balances. But certainly, she brought up some great ideas tonight, and we would, we always say we work for our clients, so we did a lot of work here, playing catch-up to get the liens filed, and so we are looking to help the City of Scranton and work together with the City of Scranton, partnering with them.
So what would you value your, so you've had this contract since 2011, correct?
Yes.
Or 2012?
2012.
The refuse since 2012. So what would you value the, your contract for the refuse? Like, how much has NRS made as profit?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Do you have a general figure?
I would be hesitant to give you that right off of, you know, without seeing the book.
Would you be able to provide us with that information?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
And my question to the administration is, so this company has had the delinquent refuse collection contract now for seven years. So will, is the city considering rebidding it? And how do the terms of the contract work? Can you explain that? And the reason I ask that is, I mean, over time, it just seems like we're spinning our wheels. So at any point, could someone, is anyone in the administration saying, "Maybe we should look at rebidding this"? And then if you can talk about how the contract works, how the term works.
So as far as rebidding it, if that's something you're suggesting, we will always evaluate that, and we're happy to look at that and weigh our options. I'm not sure the second part of your question.
What are the current terms of the contract? So in other words, do they have, it seems like they have, like, a monopoly on it now. They have the rental registration, the refuse, and the delinquent tax collection. So do they have that forever? Like, what's the terms of the contract? When does that end?
The terms are an automatic renewal year by year.
Right.
And at this point, I think they're very familiar with our system. They've developed a level of comfort with our Treasurer's Office. They understand the city's workings, its legislation. So thus far, I think it has been beneficial. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely, but those cues would come from us, from the administration and the legislative body, giving them directives as to how we would like to improve the system.
In terms of liens, you said you were playing catch-up in filing the liens? So according to this, it's, you'll be through 2017 at the end of June 2019?
Yes.
So what's the process for putting a lien on? Say you're caught up at the end of June through 2017. How long will it take to put 2018?
Well, normally, we'll start, we'll do 2018 next year, because we give them this year, since they just came over to us in the end of January. We normally don't lien them till the following year, which would be 2020. But we certainly could lien them faster if you want to. Well, that's something that we would.
So is there a strategy in place, then, to go after those first-year delinquents when those, you know, the fees and costs on their end are lower?
Yeah.
So then, you know, they're more likely to pay, I would think.
I believe we send out typical reminder letters, and I believe they're very fruitful in that first year, because people want to pay it before they get to the point of having a lien placed on their property or having additional costs placed on their account.
Jessica, before you mentioned alternative billing mechanisms, did you have anything in mind on the actual lien fee? Something that may be a little bit more easy or streamlined?
I don't want to get into the details on that. I'm very cautious as to what can be released in light of the litigation. It is absolutely something we're evaluating as far as the specifics. I don't want to disclose that right now. I hope you understand, given the pending lawsuit, the class action.
Sure, but we could look for, to hear for something once that's settled.
Absolutely. Anything that would be modified, we would absolutely include.
And I think that'd be something that would be helpful going forward. I mean, as everybody knows, this issue we're having is a two-sided coin. There's the back that we're trying to recover, and there's, you know, the higher percentage that we want to collect on a yearly basis going forward that's more in line with everybody else in the area. Now, I think the alternative billing mechanism, so I'm not for that separate bill. I'm just not for it. I'd rather something tied in with the other taxes that are paid within that property. I think it'd be much easier. I know there's difficulties with that, but I think it's something that we should definitely take a look at and make it more palatable for everybody. And now, going back, I don't know if I've heard this being suggested at all, but, you know, there's a lot of fees and interest onto some of these high amounts that we see out there, and it's, you know, it's difficult to pay. I think, you know, we've all talked about it and mentioned it. Has anybody discussed more of like a, how a student loan program is run if you fall into default, where if you make 12 payments or 12, a year of good payments, then there's some forgiveness on some of that fee and interest? You know, the face value will never be, will never be exonerated, but some of that interest will be if you are on good faith with us and you make a couple, you make 12 payments. Is that something that your company offers?
Again, we work for our clients, so we would discuss that with you, if that's something that you would like to do.
That's something I would like to do. I think that would be a motivator to get people out from underneath the rock that they're in, because, you know, there are some people that are on tougher times, and there are some people who, as we talked about, the out-of-state landlords, they're just out to cash in and grab and leave. But the people that actually do want to stay here and live here, and they do think lien is important, even though I believe it has no immediate teeth in getting the money back, it, like you said, it protects our interest, but it protects our interest more long-term. It doesn't really help us do things, and, you know, we discuss things every day that have, that the city needs money for, whether it's repairs to our house right here, or it's roads paved, or, you know, it's helping to fight the blight in the city. That money could be put to great use, and liens don't really do that for us. You know, that just pretenses it's down the road. So I'm looking, I'm in favor of more of the magistrate route. I know that comes with a lot of upfront costs, it really does, but I think by the third year, fourth year, fifth year, I think the benefits would outweigh any upfront costs. I think, you know, once the city goes on that path of how we handle it, as opposed to how we used to handle it, I think we would see our collection rate go up immensely if they knew there was going to be more of an immediate action taken by the city instead of just, "Well, you just have a lien now," so that's kind of where it is. If you don't remember it, you don't have it, and I think that's what happens to a lot of people, and they get so far gone that, you know, they just give up. So, you know- So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm for the magistrate process. I would really like to talk more about that and getting that off the ground, and I'm really for coming up with some kind of program where if they make consistent monthly payments, uh, that they still will have to, they owe us their face value, but we would be more lenient, uh, to forgive them on some of their interests and penalties if they aren't paying in good faith for a consecutive amount of time.
Could you, uh?
I hope that's something the administration would also work towards.
Uh, if you, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, could you touch on the sixteen-plus million dollars that's considered, uh, delinquent? In, in your opinion, realistically, what is actually collectible?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Oh, the sixteen-plus million dollars that has been deemed delinquent, can you touch on, in your opinion, what is realistically collectible of that money?
Well, uh, I can't give an exact number, as that's part of what Wayne and myself had referred to earlier, where we're trying to decipher year by year which parcels are actually collectible, which ones are repository, which were on the condemned list. Uh, so, I, I, I'm hesitant to do that, uh, but I can say that, you know, when you originally quoted the sixteen-point-eight million, uh, a lot of that is the interest and cost that was, uh, added on to that. If you look at the summary sheet, you'll see where there's nine-point-six million of face and penalty.
Mm-hmm.
That is outstanding. But we will diligently break down, uh, by year, how best, uh, what we feel is absolutely collectible, or, let's call it, good debt.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, I have a question. Have you or anyone in, um, associated with NRS given any political contributions to any elected officials in the city in the last few years?
I have, I can only speak for myself now.
Do you know if anyone that's associated with NRS, uh, John Rogers or anyone else?
I can't answer for him if he has or not.
Okay. Reason I ask that, um, I came across an article from July twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, uh, from the Scranton Times. It says, I'm not going to read the whole thing, just, uh, two excerpts from it. It says, "Officials of a firm that collects delinquent taxes for Scranton, Wolksberry and Luzerne County contributed campaign money and helped pay for dinner and Philadelphia Eagles tickets for Allentown Mayor, uh, Ed Palowski. In a pay-for-play scheme, the mayor orchestrated a federal indictment on sealed Wednesday charges. Uh, neither Northeast Revenue Services LLC of Wolksberry nor any of its officials have been charged with wrongdoing. The indictment charges Palowski with, uh, telling Allentown City employees to ensure Northeast got the two thousand and fourteen contract to collect the city's delinquent taxes after the contributions, the Eagles game, and the dinner. The contract had an estimated value of three million dollars, according to the indictment. Uh, Palowski complained the existing collector hadn't done anything for him." So two questions as a part of that. Um, has you or anyone associated with your company ever given a gift to the current mayor in exchange for a contract?
Not that I can recall, and I could say that, uh, you know, I know you bring up the Allentown situation, but, uh, no one from Northeast Revenue has ever been charged.
Mm-hmm.
Nor indicted, uh, nor were we even called as witnesses in the case.
Okay. And is, uh, is NRS, are you or anyone associated with NRS part of any current FBI or any law enforcement, other law enforcement investigation?
No.
No?
Okay.
Um, all right. Now, you said that there's two NRS employees that work in the treasurer's office, correct?
Yes.
Do they use the city's computer equipment?
No.
Do you use your own equipment?
Yeah, everything is Northeast Revenue.
Okay, now, do you pay rent to the city for using the, the space for the two employees?
We do not, but we do pay, um, our phone bill and our internet cable.
Okay.
And for our copier.
Uh, how about, Mrs. Esker, if you could answer this? Could you give us the status of the current, uh, trash fee lawsuit?
Sure. So procedurally, we are at a point now where the court has approved the formation of a class and has approved a notification that will be sent to all those who may be entitled to participate in the suit. We're pending that mailing. Once that is sent out, which is anticipated to be very soon, then discovery will commence and the case will begin. Uh, we are a long ways off at this point from a hearing on the merits of the actual suit, but it is underway at this time.
Um, a general question for NRS. Explain to city council, and the administration can chime in here too, uh, it's been reported right now, almost seventeen million dollars owed in, uh, garbage fees. So please explain, why should we continue to have a contract with you? What, why should we have faith that you're going to collect, uh, that amount of money? And what, why should we have any faith in the administration that they're going to come up with a plan? Obviously, what we've been doing hasn't been working. So what's the incentive for the city really to continue with NRS?
Well, I think that our efforts speak for themselves. Uh, we have collected a great amount of money, um, in collections of delinquent refuse fees from eleven through eighteen that have been turned over to us. We are in the process of scrubbing the remaining amounts that are left out there by year, and that is a compilation of repository and of the condemned list, so it's, it's, it's a tremendous task to be undertaken. But, uh, I am comfortable that, uh, at the end of the day, we will be able to say to city council, you know, the amount that is outstanding, and what is good debt and what is bad debt, and what should be written off. But I think, uh, we have two great employees downstairs who have dealt with everything under the sun since we've taken over for collections, and they can attest to that. And I think we have worked very, uh, well with both administrations that we served under, the previous administration and this administration, with Wayne Beck and with Jessica. And as I always say, we are here to service our, our clients. Uh, and to the best of our ability, we will do that, um, given direction from our clients. But we are not a firm that's going to be, um, out beating on doors and trying to intimidate individuals into making payments. That's not what our firm does. You know, we work together with our clients. We like to partner for the long haul, and that's one of the things I think we've done here, and I think we have, uh, had a great success, and there's more success to come, in my opinion.
Sure. I, I would just add that I think Northeast Revenue has absolutely executed on the directives that we have provided to them. Um, I think if we want to evaluate those directives, again, the administration is more than willing to work with council to find the right fit for our area, for our city that you all are elected to represent, to see what will work for us to improve collections.
Has there been any thought, uh, to bringing it in-house? In other words, taking out the middleman, and what would that look like? In other words, you wouldn't have a delinquent, uh, garbage collector, you would just have the treasury department do it, which at one time, I believe, years ago, they did. Now, I understand you are probably understaffed for that, but have those conversations ever taken place?
Um.
And what would that look like if you did take that on?
Well, what I'd like to, to reemphasize, uh, to some extent, is what, what Sean said. To me, they're an, an asset down there. Um, they do have their own, uh, computer system, their own phone system. Uh, the lights are on anyway, because we're there. Uh, they have their own copy machine, their own copy machine paper. Uh, they're, they're, they can move across the street and, and operate. But the fact that they're in our office, we work well together in comparing notes. Um, they have a, a very precise electronic note-keeping system, where when someone calls in the, for the second or third time to try to change their story, they can actually go back in there and say, "I spoke to you on such and such a date, and this is what I was told." They share that information with me, because, then that, the other thing I'd like to emphasize is that Northeast Revenue Service cannot, um, clear or exonerate anything. They're not allowed to. That, that's our decision, and we only exonerate if it's something that's covered by a condemnation, um, a, a vacancy that can be proven, documented, uh, things such as that. They can look at past years where there's delinquencies involved, and someone says, "Well, it was vacant. Well, why didn't you come forward?" "I didn't know." They will review the documentation that's provided, and if they feel comfortable, they can approve a vacancy. But if it's pushing the, the limit, they'll come to me, and so you have to speak to, to the treasurer. This is getting too close to being outside of what we normally accept. There's that kind of working relationship and sharing of information with them right downstairs.
But could your department?
Pardon?
theoretically, could your department do that? Do that work? In other words, could you do what NRS is doing so that we didn't have to pay, you know, we, we would be getting the money rather than an outside firm?
That, that's something that might be possible, but you're also then losing their expertise when it comes to the filing of the liens, the satisfaction of the liens, the legal end of it, uh, the legal opinions in some, in many cases. Uh, you're, you're losing all of that. So you're, um, my own personal opinion is that, working the way it works now, we're probably getting the best results, or the, um, best possible results.
Okay. Do you know how many, uh, city employees are currently on the delinquent, delinquent list, and what have, has the administration done to rectify that situation? Because, I mean, it's kind of embarrassing that you would have city employees who owe, uh, trash fees and, and, you know, nothing has happened to them.
Sure. So I have consulted with our labor council on this specific issue. At this time, I don't believe it appropriate. It's a confidential personnel matter that we are dealing with internally, um, something that's subject to, uh, possible negotiations with collective bargaining. It has not gone unnoticed, um, but as far as the specific details, that's not something that we're comfortable getting into in a public caucus.
Guys, it is six o'clock. Uh, does, you want to finish up? Does anybody have any final questions?
Uh, just my final question and thought is, where do we go from here? I mean, uh, you're going to leave this caucus, we're going to have this meeting tonight. What's the end, end result? What's the end game? Like, what's the, what's the plan? Because if I don't pay my Comcast bill, they shut my cable off. If I don't pay my electric bill, I don't have lights. Where are we going? What are we doing?
I think, you know, I, I let, I laid out some options that we are exploring, we're willing to explore them further. Um, I, I hope to work with you all and, and, you know, set forth our findings, our recommendations, and, and try to address the problem.